Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. This regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Spring Independent School District is officially called to order on Tuesday, June 11, 2019. The time is now 7:00 PM. Board Trustees present are Winford Adams Jr., Chris Baio, Deborah Jensen, Justine Durant, Jenna Gonzalez, Don Davis, and myself, Ron DeNeau House. I would like to ask everyone to turn off or silence their cell phones or any electronic devices at this time. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to recognize trustee Don Davis to introduce tonight's presentation of the colors.
Myself, please. Your first flag for the...
The United States of America and the Republic of which stands one nation under God and individual with liberty and justice for all.
I'll say, by the way, our place of residence today has one state under God, one individual. Thank you, Dr. Davis. At this time, I'd like to ask those present to please take a moment and observe, silence in your own way. You may now be seated. At this time, I'd like to recognize our superintendent, Dr. Rodney Watson.
Thank you, President DeNeau House and other trustees. I do have a few announcements for tonight, one of which is I want to, once again, I know we said this on last Thursday night, but just over a week ago, we celebrated over 2,200 students that graduated here in Spring ISD. And as we are continuing to tally in the scholarship results, right now, we're about $102 million worth of scholarships are since received, which equates to about $25 million more than last year. So that's great that our counselors and our teachers have been really working. As you know, we are going to be having summer graduation around August the 10th, and so please make sure you have it on your calendar. And this really gives our students that did not graduate this spring more opportunity to reach those milestones. If you have not been looking at Twitter, I asked you to get on and take a look. You have seen all the buzz in our Teach Up Spring building. I really want to say a special thank you to our teachers, as well as the workforce development and curriculum. If you remember, this past year, our teachers that are part of the teacher group asked for us to be able to offer the summer training, the summer. And as a result of coming to the two days' summer training, they get those days back in the beginning of the school year, which means they don't have to come to those two days mandatory training. They can actually work in their classrooms. And so if you've looked at Twitter, you've seen all of the training that's been going on. It's been packed. It's really been nice to see that building used at full capacity. The parking lot was completely full, and you know, we have an extended parking lot over there. It was completely full. And so, once again, it's been some really great training over at our Teach Up building. Hopefully, in the next couple of weeks or so, we can schedule some time to get you all over there to take a look at the facility that we purchased and renovated. And we also celebrated this past week, our new partner with Randal Reed's Planet Ford. And so we celebrated the naming rights for Randal Reed. Once again, they've been a wonderful partner with us throughout the years. And so we really wanted to just, once again, recognize their support for us and our district, as well as the naming of our stadium. That's going to give us extra support for our students. Last but not least, I had an opportunity, I think last month, to present to you all Lift 6 for middle schools. Based upon our parents' feedback, there have been some very specific things that we've been working on in terms of how could we can strengthen our middle schools. And so as we receive our data, as it's coming in, we know that there's some work to do in middle schools. And so we are fully implementing the steps necessary to get Lift 6 implemented for next year. We have been working on selecting principals for the Lift 6 program, the three schools that we have vacancies in. So we're very happy to later on be able to share with you individuals that we're going to be moving forward with that. But I think more importantly, it's important to recognize those six tenants that we have on Lift 6 that we're going to be focused on for next year. And that is a culture of high expectations, effective, our excellent principals and teachers in every school. We're really looking at maximizing the learning time, data-driven instruction, high doses tutoring, and more importantly, safe and secure learning environments. Those are the areas that our parents and our community indicated that we need to have more attention to, and so those are the main tenants that we're going to undergo the Lift 6 program. We also have, we've had some teacher meetings with all of the schools. We've also had parent meetings. We are going to be scheduling more parent meetings in the fall for all comprehensive, the six comprehensive middle schools to get, let parents know more about the Lift 6 as well. Our goal is to make sure that all of our comprehensive middle schools are fully functioning and are achieving at the highest level possible. That does conclude my remarks for tonight. I want to again, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. Do we have any board members who would have remarks for tonight?
I think we'll come in on our graduations. You know, we do graduations without any instance and celebrate success for our students. And that's like, our president always say, that's the greatest part of the year. We, I want to just express, I think, some leadership. Dr. Watson, you should came to make sure that our graduation ceremony is a professional and that we meet all our parents' expectations.
Thank you, Captain Davis. Can I run?
Let me just follow up. I was excited that Carl Wunsch High School had their first big graduating class. I tried to shake as many of the hands as I could, just because I was so proud of them and excited for them and the rest of, I think, we had what, over 2,100 easily graduates, some who already have degrees. And I'm going to be going to Harvard later on this month, talking about student post-secondary success. And so, you know, when see our kids go across stage and some are, some have their associate's degree and some know exactly what they're going to do, and some are going to four-year institutions in the military and straight into the workforce because we prepared them. Those are great things to see.
Since you brought up Wunsch, also it was exciting to see early college high school have their graduation in their new facility over at Lone Star College. And they're our smallest high school, and their graduating class was 80 odd, as I remember, and two-thirds of them have associate's degrees. I just, it was just phenomenal how hard these kids worked and what they accomplished. That was a wonderful graduation as well.
Thank you. I'd like to send a message to Mark and Dr. Watson, that your community is excited about the middle schools coming up. I'm getting calls, one in particular was concerned about transportation, getting in and out of the building, and assured them that we're going to be looking at that as well, but they are excited about the new middle schools coming up. So, to the rest of the board, I think we did a great job there.
We even have families from our neighboring districts moving in, just to get back into spring. That's, that's...
So Lift 6 is going to be right on time for you.
We have some great things happening. And I look at kids graduating, was it 80? Who graduated? Graduated with their associate's degree, that saves their parents two years' worth of college tuition, and primes them, you know, for furthering their education on just a master's degree, a higher level than they may normally achieve. And have been a part of that, is just so exciting.
So, according to the associate, it's 65 of the associate.
65, 65 of the 80.
Or they're not graduated, yes.
So it's just really exciting. There's some great things happening.
I think the other piece to that is the, for our children that are needing to get loans in order to pay for school, it's reducing that postgraduate debt, which is having ripple effects on cost of our economy right now. And so every bit that we can do that can save families money for college expenses, I think, is a big deal.
And we're doing a great job of making sure, we're increasing our scores of the kids that are taking ESSK, and the age of students and the number of students that are getting accepted into college and getting scholarships. And so when we see that kind of success, we don't get a paycheck, but that's a reward in and of itself.
Like I tell the kids, wake up in the morning, it's a great day to be in Spring ISD. Yes. So thank you, everyone. We will now continue with tonight's agenda. And on our agenda next, we have our Point of Pride award. Tonight, we have two Points of Pride, so I'd like to recognize Chief Communications Officer, Tiffany Don O'Neal.
Good evening, President DeNeau House, Dr. Watson, and team members of the board. As President DeNeau House mentioned, we have two Points of Pride this evening. One for a student, actually a recent graduate. We're very lucky, they came in the summer. And one for a very dedicated member of our Special Education Department. At this time, I just want to remind, as I always do, Points of Pride are the highest honor that you, our board, bestows on students and staff. They are not given for district-level recognition, even regional city. They are only given for first, second, and third level recognitions at state and/or a national level recognition. And so this evening, we have two individuals, a student and one staff member, who qualify for our Point of Pride award. And at this time, I'd like to call you down to our traditional horseshoe to recognize Our first Point of Pride this evening is going to a student athlete and recent graduate from Spring High School, Trayvon Mays. I'd like to invite him up to the podium to stand here on my right. I'd also like to invite two coaches that have really helped Trayvon get to where he's at today, Terrence Hammond and Marcus Vivens, to stand up here on my left. They're going to say a few words in a second. So, this is why Trayvon is here this evening. Last month, Trayvon represented Spring High School and the district at the 2019 UIL Track and Field State Meet, where he took home the silver medal in the boys' 110-meter hurdle. A three-year letterman in track, as well as a two-year letterman in varsity football, Trayvon has been tearing up the track at meet like this year's Rice Invitational and the 2019 Clyde Little Field Texas Relay at the University of Texas in Austin, where he took first place in his division in the high school boys' 110-meter hurdles. His times have earned him national attention, and he has been featured on ABC News, as well as a recent list of athletes to watch, published by the Houston Chronicle. Trayvon is headed to Texas State University in San Marcos this fall on a track and field scholarship. He plans to major in computer science and pursue his other academic interests, which include English and mechanical engineering. Let's give a big congratulations to Trayvon Mays and his family as well. And I know that his coach, Coach Vivens, wanted to say a few words about Trayvon.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here this evening, especially Trayvon. First, I'd like to, on his behalf and his family's, thank them for all their support, as well as the rest of the track team, Coach Hammond. And obviously, I'd like to thank, thank God for opportunities like this, to be able to help young men and see them grow, young men and women. There's not anything I can't say about Trayvon Mays that I haven't already said a thousand times over. What I will say is that, for the sake of the district, you know, young men like Trayvon Mays are necessary. This young man had multiple scholarship opportunities, not just because he's a great athlete, but because he's a great young man, does the right thing in the hallways, made the right grades, did well on his SATs, all the things that I know he as a community, who's the leaders of our district, would want in a student athlete such as Trayvon. But the bottom line is, is that this young man would have been successful whether he had met myself, Coach Hammond, or any of the other coaches in staff, because of his family, because of the young man that they've raised him to be. And that in itself is a blessing. It's been an absolute pleasure and a treasure that I will never forget to coach this young man. He truly will go forward in life and despite any obstacle, will be successful and will represent himself, his community, his coaches at Spring ISD with the highest of character.
And our coaches, you're welcome to walk the horseshoe. So this is his hurdles coach. I didn't even know hurdles coaches. This is a coach.
I wanted to know I had the opportunity to attend both the Texas Relay and the UIL State Meet, and I had the opportunity to see the program before going and saw spring in there, so I was ready in my dreams. I don't know if you heard me, but I was hollering, because I was on the front row there, so I was so proud of you, you're a member. Thank you, it was such a great pleasure to present that.
Tell him your connection, your memory. I have to, people appreciate that.
Well, first, I'll go back and tell you, I had the opportunity to see the program first, because my husband is a roughly read father, Texas Relay and the UIL, and I was standing out there in the middle. I had to program a couple of days ahead of class and saw that. And he had the opportunity to do that, because he's a golden children of, trying to see it.
Olympic, Olympic. She goes to the Olympics. We're going to have you walk the horseshoe, shake everybody's hand. And for our Board of Trustees, too, I did just hear that Trayvon's parents are here, so if I could have Trayvon's parents just stand and be recognized. Congratulations. Congratulations to your friends. We have a brand new one. We'll give you our board's newsletter. We did choose our trustee right here, and I'm really going to be there. Come forward just for a minute. Chris Garricki. Can I get you to join me up here at the podium? Okay, have you seen right here? This summer, Chris is being officially inducted into the Crisis Prevention Institute instructor Hall of Merit, in honor of his many years spent training teachers and others in the techniques of nonviolent crisis intervention. Since 1980, CPI-certified instructors have trained more than 10 million people in the U.S. and around the world in a variety of industries, including healthcare and education. CPI's Meritorious Instructor Designation recognizes those whose dedication, commitment, and years of service put them at the top of their field. Chris is one of only 480 instructors ever to earn this distinction. In his decade and a half teaching nonviolent crisis intervention in Spring ISD, Chris has personally trained almost 5,000 staff members, including teachers, administrators, bus drivers, campus safety and police officers, and others. His work helps teachers and other staff members support our special needs students. Keeping them safe in the classroom does helping them achieve even greater academic success. Please join me in congratulating Chris on this exciting professional milestone. And you want, we're going to take our traditional photo in a second, but Chris also has family members within this evening. Children are here within this evening. Can you anyone introduce someone?
Sure. So, I'm also a former Wunsch, early childhood graduate. Kendall and Gavin are here. I was having an awesome special ed leadership team, if you could stand, and then also my transition team. Dante and his, come back to Dante's stand. They always come to support me. Thank you for...
We're going to take our photo with the board. We're going to have you take a photo with the board. And my member of my team, many of you know Michael Estherhels, when he heard the story of this, he's really, we've been anxiously waiting to bring this forward. It's a wonderful award. Do you guys want to get in the photo? Yes.
I just want to say to our track, our track and field guys, I, my son was the only hurdler on his AAU team many years ago, and he didn't have a coach, so I had to learn. I had to learn about the hurdles. So I coached him, so I know, I know how hard it is. When I went to school many years ago with a guy named Dennis Brantley, who I think held a record many years here in the state. So that's a lot of hard work, so thank you guys for what you do. Thank you, parents.
Chris, thank you for sharing your team with us. Of course, it takes a team to be successful there, so thank you for sharing them with us. Thank you. And Trayvon, just remember, don't hook those hurdles. Don't hook the hurdles. Thank you, Ms. Don O'Neal. For our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Ann Westbrook.
Thank you, President DeNeau House, Dr. Watson, members of the board. The first item we have here tonight is the school district's Budget for Student Success Initiative and Accelerated Instruction, which is a requirement that we pass this budget set aside prior to passing the district's comprehensive budget. And so the purpose of this is to earmark funds for additional accelerated instruction for our students who fail to perform satisfactorily on the end-of-course assessment. And so what we do is, is we earmark about $360,000 in our state compensatory education fund for tutorials, Saturday school, and additional support that's needed for our students who are at risk of failing or who have failed to perform on our EOC. So we're asking the board to approve this earmarked portion of the larger 2019-2020 budget, which we'll hear about in just a moment.
Has everyone found it?
No, I'm not. It's just a discussion item.
Discussion item.
It's page 13.
You see your folder.
Yeah.
We're looking for your folder.
We're okay. It's in the folder in just a moment. It's on page 13 in your summary.
Thank you. Fought about a discussion from last week. So I will now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees adopt the 2019-2020 Spring Independent School District Budget for Student Success Initiatives and Accelerated Instruction as presented by the administration.
Madam President, I move that, that the Board of Trustees adopt the 2019-2020 Spring Independent School District Budget for Student Success Initiative and Accelerated Instruction as presented by the administration.
It's been moved by Deborah Jensen, seconded by Justine Durant, that the Board of Trustees adopt the 2019-2020 Spring Independent School District Budget for Student Success Initiative and Accelerated Instruction as presented by the administration. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Westbrook, please continue.
So now moving to our red folder, that you all have a copy of. What we have here is the preliminary budget that we've seen and reviewed throughout the entire budget process. So before we go into the actual public hearing, I wanted to make sure to walk you through some of the changes that have occurred since our discussion just Thursday evening. And so what we've added here is, we have the current law, which we've seen throughout the budget process. And then the column for the legislative budget as of June 6, which was on Thursday, what you saw on Thursday evening, compared to what we are proposing for the board to adopt tonight. And so the primary difference here is that, to ensure that we are remaining competitive with our surrounding districts and ensuring that we are compensating our teachers to the best of our ability, we have made some adjustments here to increase the amount of the salary increase that we're proposing for our teacher group, which, as we recall, includes our classroom teachers, counselors, nurses, and librarians. And so the difference between those two middle columns is what has changed from our discussion on Thursday evening to what we're proposing for the board to approve this evening. And so I'll get into that a little bit more in the details during the public hearing, but I wanted to bring your attention to this, as well as, again, the form that you're now accustomed to seeing, that has the detailed changes to those numbers, as far as the amounts that we're proposing for the teachers. that we're proposing for the teachers, the teacher pay rate. With that, I'll transition to the public.
Before you do that, I just want to say thanks to Dr. Watson, you know, we had our conversation earlier today, I did. And thanks for this consideration and thank you for the changes and the insight that helped our teachers and our employees.
May I just add also, Ms. Westbrook, that this has been an extraordinary, challenging year for you and your department, as you, I think I count three times you've had to redo the budget as you present?
Yes.
Which is a huge amount of work.
It is.
So, thank you.
You are more than welcome, and there are some people in the audience that I know heard that as well, and they're nodding their sleepy heads right now. Okay, so as Dr. Jensen mentioned, this has been an interesting session, to say the least. And so our budget preparation has been heavily dependent upon what was taking place in Austin at the legislative session. And so we all know that House Bill 3 was passed as a part of the '86 legislature and was signed into law today by Governor Abbott. And so for Spring ISD, based on the information that we have now, based on the guidance and everything that we're aware of at this point in time, we are the recipient of the minimum 3% increase that's written into House Bill 3. And what that means is that every school district is guaranteed to receive a minimum of a 3% increase in the funding when compared to the current law. And so in order to receive that minimum amount of funding, there's something referred to as a formula transition grant that transitions districts from the current law into the law as written under House Bill 3. And so as we talk through everything that's happening with House Bill 3, it's extremely complex. There's lots of changes. We're going to talk through a lot of them tonight, but it's by no means a comprehensive review of all the changes that took place as a part of House Bill 3. We are literally receiving additional guidance daily and sometimes what feels like hourly. We're in mid-conversation, working on numbers, and then something comes out and we're like, okay, let's read this and figure out how does this impact us? So a lot is happening. It's moving. And so I have the caution sign here because as we receive additional guidance, as we get a more in-depth understanding of exactly what House Bill 3 means for Spring ISD, then we'll adjust accordingly and we'll absolutely keep the board abreast of anything that changes, especially if it's anything that has a significant impact on the district's numbers. So as always, we bring three budget reviews to you, one in October, one in February, and then of course, the last one in June. So as we move through those budget reviews throughout this fiscal year, we'll discuss any changes that come up throughout that process. So I think the main takeaway here is that it is complex, it is still moving, but we really and truly feel as though we have gone through all of the shock factor. Unfortunately, you all rode that roller coaster with us over the last week, but we'll stay tuned. To just take a quick look at some of the things that are included in the legislative session, the first item is the basic allotment. The basic allotment went from $5,140 under current law to $6,160. And one of the largest changes that happened as a part of House Bill 3 that had a significant impact on Spring is the change from using the prior year property values for calculating state aid to now using the current year property values. And that had a multiple million dollar difference between what Spring would have received when using the current year property values versus, or excuse me, would have received using the prior year property values versus what we'll receive using the current year property values. We know when the legislative session began, there was a focus on providing tax relief to our taxpayers. And so that was a large part of House Bill 3 as well. And so there was a compression of the tax rate. The compressed rate before, under current law, was a dollar, and now that's been compressed to 93 cents. And so that's about a seven cent compression of the tax rate as a result of the changes in this legislative session. That change has taken place in the first year of the biennium, but in the second year of the biennium, there's additional tax reform that's taken place, and that's the 2.5% cap on the amount of taxes, the amount of revenue that districts can take in due to property value growth. And so we'll learn more and more about what that exactly means for Spring ISD in the coming weeks, but that is in the second biennium, so that's at least a year away. The other change was the repealing of the Cost of Education Index. And so that is a part of the Foundation School Program current law that adjusted the revenue that a district receives based upon the area in which the district was located. So basically, it would cost a district in Harris County more to run our district than maybe a district that's in a rural county. So the Cost of Education Index was in there for that reason. It was an outdated calculator, but it was there until it was repealed under this legislative session. The gifted and talented allotment was repealed as well. However, though it was repealed, each district still has to adopt a policy that says how we're going to fund the gifted and talented program. And we have to certify each year that we have a program to support the students that are in the gifted, that are identified as gifted and talented. And what we spent a considerable amount of time on is the amount of the required compensation increases that were included in the House Bill as well. And so what it did is it required districts to spend 30% of the revenue gained for compensation increases, and of that 30%, 75% had to go towards the teacher group and 25% had to go towards other full-time employees who were not considered administrators. The only guidance that was received as to how we utilized that 75% was that we must prioritize funding for our classroom teachers who've had five or more years of experience. And of course, we did prioritize the funding, and we'll talk about that amount in just a moment. This, the legislative session also created a teacher incentive allotment for high need schools and campuses. That is not included in any of our numbers, and that is something that we're aware of, and we'll see what that means for Spring at a later date and how that will fold into our already established Spring Rewards Strategic Compensation Plan. Another significant change was that now all school districts are required to provide a full-day pre-K program for our eligible four-year-olds. Even though we're required to provide that full-day pre-K, the funding for a full-day pre-K student will only be generated at half-day. However, we are required to use the funding that we receive as part of the early education allotment to fund the second half of the day. And as of now, that specific line item, that portion of the funding, does appear to be sufficient to cover the cost of the full-day pre-K program. There are two three-year waivers that are available to school districts that will give us the opportunity to make sure that our facilities are prepared and we're able to accommodate a full-day pre-K program across the district. However, prior to seeking the waivers, we have to prove that, that we've done that analysis and show that there's a lack of space or that we potentially have less enrollment than what we anticipated. And we're also required to work with other providers within our district boundaries to see if there's space available. This is new. We don't know all of the ins and outs of it and how we show that we've gone through this process, but of course, like everything else within, that's happened as a result of the legislative session, we'll get more information as time goes on. And so of course, we'll share that information with the board. Okay, so our budget priorities for the 1920 budget was that we would continue our focus on our strategic priorities that were established during the 1819 budget development process, and that is on special education, gifted and talented, arts integration, continuing to provide a considerable amount of professional development across the district, and then of course, on literacy and our initiatives that we've already begun there as well. Any budget process, we know budget is just that, it's based on estimates and some assumptions. And so our first estimate and assumption that we have is enrollment. Where do we think our student enrollment will be for 2019-20? So we worked with our external demographers as well as our internal accountability and research department to develop our projected enrollment that was used to develop the budget. And our projected enrollment is to remain relatively flat at about 35,391 students. Other assumptions and estimates that we're using here is that our tax rate will be about $1.43 per $100 of taxable value. And that is with the new compressed rate for the maintenance and operations at 97 cents. So we have the dollar that was compressed to 93 cents, and then we get our four golden pennies that we always had prior to the disaster relief, and that brings our maintenance and operations proposed tax rate to 97 cents, and then our interest and sinking proposed tax rate to 46 cents. And of course, the interest and sinking portion of the tax rate supports our debt service, and we won't actually pass our tax rate until October after we receive our certified values from the Harris County Appraisal District. Another assumption that we're using for developing the budget is our average daily attendance. So we know our funding is based upon how many students we have, as well as how often those students come to school. And so our average daily attendance is actually the number that we, our funding is calculated based upon. And so what we're using for this purpose is our current 2018-19 ADA of, at the fifth six, for, that's the latest information that we have currently available to us. And that number is projected at 32,363, and it represents an overall district attendance of 93.9%. We talked earlier about the change from using prior year property values to using the current year values. So a terminology that I believe we introduced to you at maybe a couple of board work sessions ago is what's called the CPTV value. And that's the comptroller's value that tells us how do we calculate our state aid. Typically, we would have that number, it would be solid, we know exactly what it is when we're doing our state aid calculations or our estimates for budget purposes. However, now with the current year values, we have to do an estimate. And so what we've done is, we have taken last year's comptroller's value, CPTV value, and just applied the percent that our estimated certified values came in in April. So in, when we received our certified estimated values from the appraisal district in April, it shows that the district's values had increased by approximately 9.33%. So in order to create this estimate, because that's all we can do at this point, we won't have the actual number for quite some time. Actually, the final number will be after the fiscal year is ended. We're using that 9.33% over last year's value, and that gives us at that $14.1 billion. So that's what we're using to estimate, and we will keep an extremely watchful eye on that number throughout this year because it does have a significant impact on the amount of state aid we receive.
Ms. Westbrook?
Yes, sir.
Do we see a lot of variance in that percentage increase or decrease?
Oh, yes. Yes. So part of the guidance that we received was to go back and look over the last five years and look at the change in your certified value compared to the change in the comptroller's value and see how that lines up. And so that's how we arrived at using the 9.33%. But for us, if you go back five years, we go into the, when Exxon first came on our roll, when we had two years back-to-back with about an 18% increase in our values. And then last year, we had just under a 5% increase in our values, and then now this year, a 9% increase in our values. So we're, hopefully, this is a good approach of how we're estimating that value. I think it is a good approach, but we'll see how that works out going forward as we get our actual values in August. So your question is whether or not the value growth changes much or the CPTV value growth changes much?
I think it's, I think it's a little bit of both. I worry about what happens if we have a really large variance between your projection, which I'm pretty sure you did your homework on, but if something unforeseen happens after the fiscal year, we roll around to next year and have this gap, what happens then?
We'll have to adjust. I think it's a good approach, but it is not the same as knowing exactly what that number is. So it is definitely something that gives us reason to be concerned.
I pose the question with the hope that somebody in Austin hears these questions asked and does something about it in the next biennium.
Okay. Okay, so looking at just the trend over the last 10 years of peak enrollment compared to, you can't read those numbers very well here, but I know you all have a copy of them. Basically, this number here is our estimated student enrollment, which is the 35,391 compared to this past, this, I don't know, current or, I guess it's over now, so it's 2018-19, which is the 35,532. And then you just look over the last 10 years, and if you go back 10 years or so, we were at about 36,000, that's where 28 with our peak enrollment. Here's a look at our values, and of course, you can't read the numbers, but you can see the way the arrows are going there and how our values have continued to go up over the last 10 years, and you can see that nice little 9% increase in our taxable values that occurred this year. So what we're asking the board to approve tonight is three budgets, and that's our general fund budget, which we have spent countless hours reviewing and discussing and looking at numbers, and then our debt service budget, which is very short and sweet. It is how much do we owe in our debt service payments over the next year, and then our child nutrition budget. So those are the three budgets that we're required to ask the board to approve, and the total operating budget for those three funds is 416.9. This is a look at our proposed budget when you compare 2018-19 to 2019-20, and the number we just talked about with general fund is that 324.6 million compared to the adopted budget last year, 2018-19, which was 312.4. Again, and something to take a look at there is just the cost per student. $9,137 per student in the proposed budget as compared to 8,790 last year.
Ms. Westbrook?
Yes.
Just for clarification, as we talk about that, might you define what the basic allotment is? I think it's 6160. Just define that for us.
That's the starting point for calculating the amount of revenue that a school district gets. So we talked about that refined ADA amount up there, the 32,362, you take that and you multiply it by the basic allotment of 6,160, and that's our starting regular program allotment, and then we add our weighted funding on top of that. So for example, our funding we've received for state compensatory education for at-risk students has an additional weight. Career and technology students have an additional weight, but the basic allotment is the starting thing.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, here's a look at just the spread of our revenue sources. So state is still 52% of our total revenue received, locals at 45, and then we receive a little over 1% federal funding, and that's our school health and related services, which is the SHARs federal funding, JROTC federal funding, and our indirect costs that we receive as a part of our federal program funding. Expenditures here, pretty simple, a pretty consistent mix with what we've seen in prior years, with of course, our payroll costs making up the lion's share of our total expenditures, which is very normal and customary given the industry that we're in. Okay, so what's included in this budget? What's included in that 324 million? Our proposal for our teacher raises is for teachers who have between zero and four years of experience to receive a raise of $2,260, which represents about 4.3% of an increase for them. And then for teachers, again, using that language from the House Bill that says prioritize funding for our teachers that have more than five years of experience. funding for our teachers that have more than five years of experience, we're proposing a raise of three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And depending on the years of experience, that could be anywhere from a five to a six percent increase for our teachers. As a part of that teacher group is of course, our counselors, nurses, and librarians, and we're proposing a three point five percent increase for that group of staff members. We're also including a seventy-five cent per hour increase for our custodians. And before the custodians get the seventy-five cents per hour, they'll also receive the proposed two percent rate. So they'll get their regular two percent and then the seventy-five cents on top of that, which will help make our pay for our custodian staff much more competitive and aligned with our neighboring districts. We're also proposing a pay grade increase for our case care professionals who work with our special needs students. And of course, as mentioned a moment ago, a two percent raise for all of our staff that's not included in that House Bill Three teacher group. As part of the House Bill Three and some of the new initiatives, there's also additional funding for school safety initiatives, and for spring, that's about three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. We don't know the specifics just yet of exactly how those funds need to be used, but we know it'll go towards school safety. So if we get that additional information, of course, we'll, we'll build that plan. A decrease in the teacher, excuse me, the student-teacher ratio at the middle school. So that will take our middle school campuses from a current ratio of thirty-three to one to thirty to one. And included in your package is a page that shows you exactly how many teachers, I think it's about each three or four maybe in your packet? Each four? Thank you. So that'll show you how the twenty-four additional teachers that'll be added to the middle schools will be throughout the campus. There's also funding for the additional staff for our new facilities as part of our bond program. As we all know, as Ms. Newhouse mentioned earlier, we're excited about our two middle schools opening next year, and we have the cost for those two facilities included here. There's also funding for the initiative as a part of House Bill Three for the, what we call CCMR, the College Career and Military Readiness. That funding is just shy of a hundred thousand dollars, and it'll go towards that program. We're not exactly sure what we need to do to, to be compliant with that, but we'll get that information as we go along. So last but not least, this public hearing also provides the opportunity for our members of the community, if they have any questions on our federal budget, that will be approved as well. They're not required for the board to take action on them, but, but we do have our federal budgets that start up around July first as well. And tonight with us, we have our Assistant Superintendent of Federal and State Compliance, Ms. Kelly Klein, that hears if there's any questions on that. And with that, board members, I'm asking for you all to adopt, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Do you have questions before I ask you that?
Yes, sir. I just need a clarification. Now we discussed, I know there have been many changes this, Thursday night, but we discussed about the increase, compensation, health insurance.
Yes. And so...
Just highlight that real quickly.
Yes. So as part of our initiative to have a much more competitive increase for our teacher pay, we're not able to propose the increase to the district's own needs.
No.
Okay.
No, just as a follow-up to that, I think traditionally, like probably all other health plans, it goes up every year. And I think in the past, we've tried to address it, but it's kind of going to wash, give it and plan take it away, so to speak. Yeah. One thing I always like to point out when we do these budgets is that when you look at that pie chart, the federal amount that we get is, is so small. It's, it's very targeted, nutrition, R O T C, and other areas, but I think a lot of people think we get a lot more money from the federal government than we actually do, because they tend to make more noise, meaning the government at the federal level. But it's a very small...
And so this, the federal portion that you're referring to here is a very small portion of our total general fund budget. I believe it's about six million of the three hundred and twenty-four million. However, the budget that we're referring to here is the Title I, Title II, III, and IV, and those are a bit larger than what we get on the general fund side.
Thanks for the clarification. And just two things. So they took away the gifted and talented allotment, but that's one of our priorities. We talk a lot about unfunded mandates, and I don't know if that's a definition of it, but how will that affect, and I'm, I'm open to anybody else at the DIAS discussing it, but how will that affect our priority of impacting gifted and talented?
And so the intent was that the line item funding went away for gifted and talented, but that's the amount for the funds to sustain the program that's included in the basic allotment? That is the, the guidance that we received. And so it was a part of our baseline budget, and we kept it a part of our baseline budget at its original funded amount.
And the last thing is, I believe when we passed the bond, didn't we pass, in that bond package, there was something that would address pre-K, right?
Yes, sir. We do. We have funds for the pre-K programs that's included in this last tranche of funds that we sold back in February. So yes, sir, we do have funds for that.
Is it possible to give, and I don't know if you did it tonight, a more detailed breakdown on the title money and the federal?
Yes. And so what you typically would receive for us when we weren't making changes at five P M. today?
I know.
Is a much more detailed booklet, and you will definitely receive that in the coming days. Now, what it has, is it has it broken down by the fund type, and it's just payroll, contracted services in that manner? Is that the level of detail, or do you want more of what initiatives are being funded from those programs? Second part? Okay. Yes, ma'am. We will definitely work on that for you.
I just want to be a third voice speaking from here that notes that are not helping our focus with health insurance and health issues. And I, I know our hands are somewhat tied, but that's another bit of disappointment in time.
So I, I'd like to say, it's been years since we've seen an increase. So it's a, it's a good thing, but it came, it's a start, but it came with a lot of strain and a lot of last-minute changes that I don't think we really even know all the impacts to that. I'm comfortable because of the long history of your department and success and what an amazing job you do, I'm comfortable with the estimates and, and what we're doing. I have a lot of confidence in what you presented. But I do want to make a comment to the community that our legislators took a step, and then they took two steps back, but they took a step. So we, we weren't able to do all of that. We were hoping we would be able to do this, this extra dollar.
It's always a dance, isn't it?
They're like, oh, sunshine, and then oh, but.
Very sorry. And Ms. Westbrook, we absolutely understand that we're going from budgets that were based on certified values and, and we knew what proportion of that money was going to come in to a more uncertain future. And after Hurricane Harvey, I just, let's say I'm, I worry more about what could happen next that could hurt our values, but you know, what we'll do is what we've always done with our judge.
Exactly.
And do the best we can, we can.
It's just fortunate we have a talented, strong and successful finance department because a lot of just, they don't, they're a risk.
Thank you. We appreciate that, and we certainly do not make your confidence lightly.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrook. Ms. Hill, do we have anyone registered to speak to this agenda item under the public hearing?
No, Madam President, we do not.
As there are no identified speakers, let us continue with tonight's agenda. I will now entertain a motion to adopt the two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty Spring Independent School District Budget as presented by the administration.
Madam President, I move the Board of Trustees to adopt the two thousand nineteen dash twenty twenty Spring Independent School District Budget as presented by the administration. Second?
Yes. It has been moved by Dawn Davis and second by Winford Adams, Jr., that the Board of Trustees adopt the two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty Independent School District Budget, Spring Independent School District Budget as presented by the administration. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously.
Now we need to let those folks come home.
They've worked just about twenty-four seven. Thank you. Our next item is the public hearing for the two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty Optional Flexible School Day Program. At this time, I would like to recognize our Chief of School Leadership and Student Support Services, Dr. Lupita Hanaosa.
Thank you, Ms. Newhouse, Dr. Watson, and members of the board. As you recall, we discussed this request for a waiver on Thursday. This is an annual waiver that we submit to the state to allow us to continue our Optional Flexible School Day Program, which is what we know as our ASAP program, Achieving Success Alternate Program. And this program specifically is designed to have flexible hours to allow our students that, our high school students that may be at risk of either dropping out or have already dropped out, and allows them the opportunity to recover credit, to retake courses in order to improve the graduation rate. And as I shared with you last Thursday, our students attend, we have a cycle of three sessions during the day. They each attend a minimum of three hundred and sixty minutes a day. We do receive funding for these students, and this year, we have the opportunity to have a hundred and eighty-five students enroll in our program. Four hundred and sixty-three courses were completed with two hundred and twenty-one credits allocated for a total of sixty graduates. And so the request is for the board, for you to approve the administration's recommendation to once again submit this waiver to the state. And as a part of a public hearing, we do provide the opportunity for our community to speak to this request for a waiver.
Thank you, Dr. Hanaosa. Ms. Hill, do we have anyone registered to speak to this agenda item under public hearing?
No, Madam President, we do not.
As there are no identified speakers, let us continue with tonight's agenda. I will now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve proposed two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty Optional Flexible School Day Program as presented by the administration.
Madam President, I move the Board of Trustees to approve the proposed two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty Optional Flexible School Day Program as presented by the administration.
Second? It has been moved by Janet Gonzalez, second by Justine Durant, that the Board of Trustees approve the proposed twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Optional Flexible School Day Program as presented by the administration. Is there any discussion?
Just that I think it's a wonderful program. You know, thank you for making this available to kids who have to work or have daycare problems, that sort of thing, just making education accessible.
And the numbers that you shared with us are increases over the last year, isn't it?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Seeing that program grow, which is really exciting. About sixty graduates that we potentially wouldn't have had had it not been for this program.
Allows us to continue to reach out and to help make all of our students successful. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. For our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief Human Resources Officer, John McKees.
Good evening, President Newhouse, Dr. Watson, and all the members of the board. I have two items on tonight, and after our awesome CFO has already talked to you about the budget, I have to now, my team aligns both our staffing guidelines as well as our compensation plan to that budget. And so for the staffing guidelines, which you'll see the full staffing guidelines in your blue folder, the only change from the last discussion that we had is really looking at our middle schools that Ms. Westbrook's talked about, and that is changing our teacher allotment from the thirty-three to one to the thirty to one. So, so that's really the only adjustment that is in the staffing guideline that you didn't see the last time. That is going to be on page four and five, I guess. And if the, if you look under regular teachers, there's an allotment there that should say thirty to one. The last time you saw it, it said thirty-three to one.
Good change on the...
And so, so that's the only thing from a staffing guideline standpoint. With a compensation plan, which is in your blue folder, you'll see that because of some of the changes that were happening, you know, as, as we've been working through one, and in her team, finishing their work, we have to work through the compensation plan. So my team is actually still in the process of putting, aligning those details within the compensation plan. But one of the things that we really would love for the board to do is to go ahead and approve the compensation plan under the expectation that we're going to align it to the budget that Ann has produced on today. So with our teacher skills, we're going to align it based off of what Ann has produced on tonight, as well as the, looking at the two percent for all of the staff. We have to get all those schedules adjusted in order to align to what the budget has offered on tonight.
Just to keep it real quick.
Yes, sir.
From your staffing guidelines, page five, library media specialist, page five funded by Title I. I know we discussed this much and much, or maybe last year, whatever. Just clarify that for my thinking again, that page five funded by Title I.
Yeah, so...
Real title.
Yeah, so, so basically, you know, at one point, we had just a half day for our librarians, library media specialists now, and in order for us to go to the full, full day and full allotment, point five of that allotment had to be funded through Title I, just so we could have the funds in order to make that a full, full position. Still, you have point five funded through our general fund as it was already, and we took the point five from Title I to get it a full composition.
So just one more time on to the continuation, funded by Title I.
Yes, from a priority standpoint, I know that was a big priority for the board in order to get that done, and so that's something that's just a lot in our Title I every year.
Thank you.
There are no questions. I'd love for the board to approve both the staffing guidelines and the compensation
Thank you, Mr. McKees. We will do those separately. So I will now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees adopt the staffing guidelines for the two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty school year.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees adopt the staffing guidelines for the two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty school year.
It's been moved by Justine Durant, second by Chris Vell. The Board of Trustees adopt the staffing guidelines for the two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty school year. adopt the staffing guidelines for the 2019-2020 school year. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees adopt the changes to the compensation manual. Did you call for a separate?
Yeah, I was doing it separately. I'll go on and do as you ask. I will entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees adopt the compensation manual for the 2019-2020 school year, as authorized.
I move that the Board of Trustees adopt the changes to the compensation manual for the 2019-2020 school year, and authorize superintending or designating to make any additional changes as required or allowed by the budget.
It's been moved by Winford Adams, second by Dawn Davis, that the Board of Trustees adopt the changes to the compensation manual for the 2019-2020 school year, and authorize the superintendent or designate to make any additional changes as required or allowed by the budget. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. McKees.
Thank you.
I now would like to recognize our Chief Operations Officer, Mark Miranda.
Yeah, thank you, President Newhouse, Dr. Watson, members of the board. We're on page 33. This is an item that we had the opportunity to celebrate last Thursday, and so we were really excited last Thursday to celebrate this, and this is the request for the formal approval of the agreement between Spring ISD and Randall Reed's Planet Ford for the naming rights of the Spring ISD Stadium and Community Center.
Thank you, Ms. Miranda. We enjoyed that celebration, and everybody was very excited about it. So I will now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the Spring ISD naming rights agreement with Randall Reed's Planet Ford.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the Spring ISD naming rights agreement with Randall Reed's Planet Ford.
It's been moved by Deborah Jensen, second by Jana Gonzalez, that the Board of Trustees approve the Spring ISD naming rights agreement with Randall Reed's Planet Ford. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Yes, we were very excited about it. It would be beautiful. So for our next item, I'd again like to recognize our Chief of School Leadership and Student Support Services, Dr. Lupita Henohe.
Thank you, Ms. Newhouse, Dr. Watson, and members of the board. We are on page 41. And this is an MOU of contract with Harris County Department of Education to provide contracted services around occupational and physical therapy services. And we talked about the services that Harris County Department of Ed would be providing, our services that our students need and are required based on their assessment. We also talked about the services specifically around physical therapy, as well as occupational therapy and music therapy, for a total of nine full-time either therapists or assistant therapists, and seven part-time therapists and assistant therapists. And so the administration is requesting that you approve this MOU with Harris County Department of Ed.
Thank you. And I think we all realize at this time that Mr. Winford Adams is not taking part in this digital vote. I'll entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the contract for occupational and physical therapy services with Harris County Department of Education for the 2019-2020 school year.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the contract for occupational and physical therapy services with Harris County Department of Education for the 2019-2020 school year.
Second. It's been moved by Justine Durant, second by Deborah Jensen, that the Board of Trustees approve the contract for occupational and physical therapy services with Harris County Department of Education for the 2019-2020 school year. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Motion carries with one exception. Let it go on record that he is recusing himself because of his employment with Harris County Department of Education. Thank you, Dr. Henohe. So for our next item, I will entertain a motion to adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all the items listed on the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved by Winford Adams, second by Justine Durant, that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? I'd like to let it go on record that we went through each one of the consent agenda items at our Thursday night work session. So I think the board has had plenty of time to go through this. So with there being no discussion, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next is the public participation portion of our meeting. Chief Hill, do we have anyone registered to speak on the public participation?
Yes, Madam President, we do. We have three registered speakers tonight. The first is Charisma Brooks of 910 Ross Cut Court, 77090, to speak to the pay raise in the budget. The second speaker will be Terrence Boggs of 201 River Point Drive, Apartment 717, to speak to the pay raise in budget. The third speaker is Lori Douglas of 21123 North Tangle Creek Spring 77388, who will also speak to AFT's pay raise. Please wait, thank you. So to all of the registered speakers, let me please provide the instructions and the guidelines for tonight's speaking before the board. The board invites interested citizens to address the board on any subject that they desire other than allegations concerning the character or capability of any board member, staff member, citizen, or student of the district. The board provides an opportunity on the agenda for citizens to address the board, and we welcome your participation. The board will listen and will not interrupt unless the person addressing the board infringes on the guidelines as stated previously, or exceeds the time limit authorized for the presentation. In this case, each of you will have three minutes to present, and Mr. Schiffer will keep time, which will be displayed on the monitors. According to law, the board may not take any action on an item that is not on the agenda. The board will not debate nor respond to any question during the meeting in order to research the question thoroughly before replanting. The board will seriously consider the matter brought to its attention and respond appropriately. Also, according to law, it is a criminal offense for a person to obstruct, prevent, interfere with, or disrupt a lawfully called meeting through physical action or verbal ordnance. Citizens are requested to supplement any oral address to the board with a written summary of their presentation and any recommendations they may wish to suggest. Thank you for your concern regarding our school district, and we will hear from you now. Ms. Brooks?
Good evening. My name is Charisma Brooks, teacher at Laker Elementary and a member of Spring American Federation of Teachers. I am here today to urge our school board to adopt our union resolution to provide and continue to provide a true pay raise for all employees. State lawmakers work on legislation that could bring new dollars to our public schools. These new dollars could help provide meaningful salaries increases and help lower healthcare premiums. The resolution reads as follows. Whereas our growing Texas public school system is ranked 43rd in school spending compared to the rest of the country, and Texas teachers are paid 7,000 less than the national average of Texas teacher salaries. And whereas the STAR was designed to measure a student's college and real readiness, whereas the academic studies have repeatedly shown the readability and level of STAR tests are years above the actual grade levels being tested and do not accurately reflect grade level, knowledge, or achievement. Whereas teachers should not be assessed based on standardized test scores since teacher instruction accounts for about 1% to 14% of variability in standardized test scores. Whereas teachers' pay raise should be across the board and not based on merit pay. Whereas the Spring ISD School Board represents over 1,000 teachers and support personnel of 38 campuses throughout our community, who also educate over 35,000 students. And whereas money matters in education, and Texas's fastest-growing student populations are English language learners, students with special needs, and children who live in property, all of whom require significant additional resource. And whereas the lack of state support, local school districts' ability to keep up with the increased cost pressures, including retirement and healthcare contributions, and rising utility and transportation costs, leaving little room for schools to provide increased teacher compensation, lower class sizes, or program improvements. Therefore, be it resolved that the Spring ISD School Board will seek to safeguard neighborhood public schools by supporting Spring ISD educators' efforts to fight for increased funding meaning to fund our future. And we would like to thank you on behalf of the AFT Board for adopting a pay raise.
Thank you.
Mr. Boggs?
Thank you. I do want to thank you very, very much for having us here and for the school board raise that you just gave us, or at least you are in the process of giving us. It's actually much more than we anticipated, and it is across the board, and I want to say thank you. I had the pleasure of being in Austin when they're debating SB3. The room was full of teachers from across the state, literally in fact, with standing in the back. One of the areas that SB3 originally addressed was merit pay. The state decided to remove that. Unfortunately, our district still has that provision and plans on implementing merit pay. Dr. Jamie Wilson, Superintendent Denton ISD, put out a statement recently about merit pay due to today's proposal. He said the following. During the past few weeks, our state legislators discussing the idea of merit pay for teachers. I hear it all the time. Merit pay's a good idea. The bonus structure in corporate America is also, is often more than salary drawn by the employee, because pay, because people are always paid for their performance, not the performance of their clients, like we are, customers' vulnerability to get others to achieve, like we are. I cannot disagree with the bonus concept when it comes to sales, client acquisition, production, et cetera. However, when it comes to teachers, there are many variables to consider. We're not salespeople. Our teachers assess students on a daily basis. They can tell you firsthand that their students are learning what they need to learn. That's their job. That's their passion. To assume teachers will work harder, to do more for more money, is, in my opinion, an insult to their profession and their work. Remember, this is Denton ISD, not me. You're going, wait a minute. When it comes to the value of our teachers provide, their compensation is not commensurate. We employ thousands of hard-working teachers giving their all every day. And my side note on that to imply that we give them our money, they'll work harder, they're not going to, they're already giving their all, or they wouldn't be here. Like you, our employees' raises are usually eaten up with increases in insurance-free deductions and other necessities resulting in less money out of their pocket. One of you said that earlier, actually, I heard that. So, and which translates into fewer funds to spend in our community. If the state has decided to remove the merit pay provision of SB3 due to input from teachers, perhaps we should consider getting all teachers to the average national salary before siphoning dollars to a merit pay system tied to a one-day high-stakes test. We added 3,000 more thousand, but in fact, this was 7,000 under the national. And to be honest, all school boards are going to be raising their salaries. So we're not really increasing it to a level to be competitive, we're actually increasing it with all the districts are going to be increasing their salaries. And that's something to consider. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Ms. Douglas?
Good evening. My name is Lori Douglas. I'm an 11-year teacher from Northgate. I was one of the teachers that helped open that school. My passion is teaching. You heard from two of my fellow teachers, and we're with American Federation of Teachers. And we are very passionate about what we do. The reason we do it is for the kids, obviously. I was pleasantly surprised by Trey Vaughn was here. He went through Northgate Crossing, and we knew all his family, and he recognized us because we've been here a while. We helped that, you know, he was elementary for us, but we had a hand in that. You want to retain good teachers in this district. You don't want to have a bunch of brand-new teachers. You don't want to have brand-new teachers and then veteran teachers. You want longstanding teachers that are going to retire here, like I'm going to. And so we are advocating that you pay us across the board what the state legislature has voted for us to get, pay raises. The millions in scholarships that you were touting before is wonderful, but that's from your teachers, your teachers' hard work, all the extra hours that we put in. So we are advocating that we get the, instead of merit-based pay, as Mr. Boggs was saying. Better watch that time. As our union, we marched the Capitol over spring break. We talked to our legislators. We had legislative breakfast. You know, in this district alone, there are, right now, there's about 700 to 800 teachers that are part of the union, and we're watching to see how much money we're going to be funded the next year. At the end of the year, when we weren't certain how much money the legislature was going to pass, how it was going to come to us, we passed a petition, and within two weeks, we got over 200 signatures from teachers, cafeteria workers, custodians, that are concerned. They want above the board, they want, not above the board, across the board pay increase to keep your highly qualified staff. Another thing, in doing all this work with the union, that I've noticed is a lot of our goals merge, or they dovetail very nicely together. We are very strongly against charter schools. I know that's the reason our attendance is flat, like you were showing, Ms. Westbrook. It's charter schools. So I, I think that the union and the school district should ally themselves to help fight charter schools, to help them from siphoning off money for our public schools. We are big advocates of community schools, and I've heard Dr. Watson talk about community schools. So anyway, that's what your AFT teachers are up here tonight telling you. Your teachers are watching. We're working hard. We're passionate, and we want our across-the-board favor. Thank you, guys. Very nice.
That concludes our speakers, Madam President. Thank you, Dr. Hill, and thank you to all of our registered speakers, all three of you, thank you. The Board of Trustees will now reset this open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.071, for the purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subjects or matters authorized. Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.072, for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.074, for the purpose of considering considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee, and Texas Open Meeting Act, Section five five one point oh seven six, to consider the deployment or specifications for implementation of security personnel or devices. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussion in the closed meeting will take place after the board reconvenes in open session. The time is now eight thirty-one P.M. We will now address the items discussed during closed session. Are there any motions?
Madam President, I move that the board render a final order to non-renew the contracts of the following employees as authorized superintendent or designate to notify the employees of the action taken by the board. Melissa Pruitt, Kathy Carroll, and Peter Cooper.
Second. It is been moved by Deborah Jensen, seconded by Justine Durant, that the board render a final order to non-renew the contracts of the following employees and authorize superintendent or designate to notify the employees of action taken by the board. Melissa Pruitt, Kathy Carroll, and Peter Cooper. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to propose the termination of the term contract of the following employee, Willie Williams, as presented in closed session, and to authorize superintendent or designate to provide the employee notice of the board's action and his right to pursuant to Chapter twenty-one of Texas Education Code.
Second. It's been moved by Winford Adams, seconded by Deborah Jensen, that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to propose the termination, term contract of the following employee, Willie Williams, as presented in closed session, to authorize the superintendent or designate to provide the employee's notice of the board's action and his right to pursue it to Chapter twenty-one of Texas Education Code. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Chris?
Second.
The motion carries five yes, I'm sorry, six yes, one extension. Oh, I'm sorry. Two, five, two. Two extensions, five yes. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move the board declare the probationary contract of Michael Martin to be void pursuant to Chapter twenty-one of Texas Education Code and approve the termination of his employment for not to be effective immediately. I further move that the board authorize superintendent or designate to notify this employee of the action taken by the board.
Second.
It's been moved by Jana Gonzalez, seconded by Dawn Davis, that the board declare the probationary contract of Michael Martin to be void pursuant to Chapter twenty-one of Texas Education Code and approve the termination of his employment with Spring ISB effective immediately. I further move that the board authorize superintendent or designate to notify these employees of the action taken by the board. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the board approve settlement of the lawsuit style Van Thielen versus Spring ISB, case number, cause number two zero one six dash two five seven. He wrote, as discussed in closed session, and authorized superintendent or designate to execute any necessary agreements as a result of the board's action.
Is that second? It's been moved by Chris Bell, seconded by Justine Durant, that the board approve settlement of the lawsuit style Van Thielen versus Spring ISB, case number, cause number two zero one six dash two five seven two zero, as discussed in closed session, and authorize superintendent or designate to execute any necessary agreements as a result of the board's action. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the board approve resolution pending non-renewal appeals for the following employees, as discussed in closed session, and authorize the superintendent or designate to negotiate and execute resignation and release agreements with such employees. Anthony Jones, Sherry Bowman, Martin Barrera, Creighton Moody, Stacy Gerstie, Edric Harrison, Laura Garcia, and Thomas Boonight.
It's been moved by Deborah Jensen, seconded by Dawn Davis, that the board approve resolution pending non-renewal, full appeal, for the following employees, as discussed in closed session, and authorize superintendent or designate to negotiate and execute resignation and release agreements with such employees. Anthony Jones, Sherry Bowman, Martin Barrera, Creighton Moody, Stacy Gerstie, Edric Harrison, Laura Garcia, Thomas Boonight. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Extension?
None.
The motion carries six, four, one, no.
Six, what was that again?
Six, four.
A six, four.
One, no, one, no. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the board approve superintendent's recommendation to rescind the proposed non-renewal of the term contract of Daniel Garcia Escaneo, issue the employee a term contract for the 2019-2020 school year, and authorize superintendent or designate to notify the employees of board's action.
Second. It's been moved by Justine Durant, I'm sorry. It's been moved by Deborah Jensen, seconded by Justine Durant, that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to rescind the proposed non-renewal of the term contract of Daniel Garcia Escaneo, issue the employee a term contract for the 2019-2020 school year, authorize superintendent or designate to notify the employees of board's action. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All votes for no? Both, three, four, four, no. Are there any other motions? There are no other motions? There are no other items on tonight's agenda. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Do you wish to return?
Second.
It's been moved by Jana Gonzalez, seconded by Dawn Davis, that the Board of Trustees adjourn this meeting. All those in favor, raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. There being no further business, the meeting is officially adjourned at ten thirty-five P.M.